Okay, let's move on to conduct of business. Item six on our agenda, City Clerk.
Receive update on planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project and provide direction on the preferred alternative for the railroad tracks and type of pedestrian/bicycle crossing at Scott Street.
Okay, and I believe, Hey Wan, will we be turning this over to you this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Hey Wan Ritchie. I'm the City Engineer for San Bruno. I'm here to provide an update on the planning study work that's been performed since November 2019 on the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project. The purpose of the study is to evaluate the various options for the grade separations at South Linden Avenue in South San Francisco and Scott Street in San Bruno. So, San Bruno has been contemplating since at least 2005 providing a grade separation at Scott Street. With grant funding from San Mateo County Transportation Agency, we have since 2018 undergone this planning study project. The project development team consists of the cities of San Bruno, South San Francisco, Caltrain, and consultants ACOM, Apex, CDM Smith. This update will focus on Scott Street and San Bruno. This slide shows the agenda for the presentation. First, I'll go over the objectives for this presentation. Provide background, including the future of rail in the Peninsula. Present the project alternatives. Summarize the community engagement efforts and feedback received. Provide staff recommendation to answer any questions and receive direction. The objectives for tonight are to select an alternative for further study by the project development team. To get there, we will deliver this update, present staff's recommendation, and request your direction. This slide shows the work performed to date, including community meetings and updates to council. I won't go through each one, but we've had three community meetings and at least three council updates. Prior to each community meeting, we mailed bilingual mailers to the project vicinity. The last two community meetings included over 2,000 mailers apiece. Prior to tonight's meeting, we posted on the city's social media, including Nextdoor and Facebook, provided information on the project website, and emailed the project mailing list. There are various planning efforts along the Caltrain corridor. Caltrain did adopt the moderate growth scenario examined in their business plan. There are multiple city-led grade separation projects in various phases. So, just to note that there is not necessarily a priority list, but as agencies do become eligible to compete for sources of funding depending on the phase of completion. And also, high-speed rail project late is currently in their public comment period for the environmental documents. So, in relation to the Caltrain business plan effort, the following slides will show how Caltrain traffic is expected to increase. And so, here we have on the top row, the current number of stops in San Bruno, about 56, and under the moderate growth scenario, those would increase to over double, which is 116. This slide shows the number of daily trains in the corridor. Currently, the existing is 92, and that is expected to grow to almost 400 at 398. This slide shows the increase in trains per peak hour. So, currently, there are about 10 trains per peak hour, but those will increase to 24. So, what does this mean? That trains will be passing through San Bruno every few minutes. And if you picture an at-grade crossing, which I will go to the next slide, every time a train passes by, prior to the train passing, the gates will come down. Vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists will be prohibited from passing. When the trains pass by and are clear, the gates will go up, back up, and allow for the crossings. So, what this could mean is that for, currently, under current conditions, the gate is down about 10 minutes for every hour, but during peak service times, that might include, increase up to 20 minutes, about 19 minutes. Under the high-growth scenario, that could be close to 24 minutes, which is practically half an hour. So, why build a grade separation? There are multiple reasons that a grade separation would be desirable. One is to protect the city, its residents and neighborhoods, from the impacts of more trains. This increases level of safety, reduces congestion, and decreases noises from the trains, train horns. So, where did we leave off since November 2019? Three options were presented. Community meeting number two was focused on these three options, and that was to either provide no grade separation, to provide grade separation, but to close Scott Street to motor vehicles. And the third option was to provide full grade separation even for vehicles, but that would include property impacts. Council summarily rejected option C and wanted to preserve residential properties. Option A was also determined to be not favorable due to the traffic impacts and safety concerns. So, option B was selected. This is just a brief overview of why option C, at the worst-case scenario, a number of residential properties and commercial properties would be affected, and so this option was rejected, as a reminder. So, the selected grade separation plan includes either providing an over and under crossing for pedestrian bicyclists and closing Scott Street to vehicular travel. This eliminates conflicts between trains and the other modes of travel. So, I do want to give some context to the project location and its boundary conditions. On this slide here, we show San Francisco, or north is to the left and south is to the right. Our boundary conditions are Coma Creek to the north in South San Francisco, and I-380 and our existing Caltrain station at San Bruno Avenue. Those structures, the creek and I-380 Caltrain, are not ones that can be easily reconstructed or moved, and so those are considered our boundary conditions. Additionally, South Linden and Scott Street are in close proximity to one another. They're less than 2,000 feet away, and so what occurs at one station or at one crossing will affect the other and vice versa. Scott Street additionally is close to I-380 and the Caltrain station, and so what this means is that the tracks, because of the gentle increase or decrease in slope that can be experienced by a train at high speeds, the amount of rise or fall that the Scott Street Railroad can have at that crossing is not very high. So, the range is 2 and 1/2 feet raising and 6 feet lowering at its maximum. While South Linden, which is a little bit more equidistant between Coma Creek and I-380, has a broader range because it is further from those two boundary conditions, so plus or minus 15 feet for the track. So, as part of the staff report package, there was a copy of attachment two, which is a summary table of the alternatives. Just briefly, on the left-hand side, are, is this overcrossing options for Scott Street, and on the right-hand side is the undercrossing option. On the top row are the various alternatives for what the tracks can do, which is either to be raised partially. In Scott Street, that would be about 2 and 1/2 feet. Partially lowered, which is lowered by about 6 feet. And then, alternatives three and four leave the railroad crossing or the tracks at the same grade. The reason that we have three and four here are because at South Linden, the road can either go fully under or fully over. And then, similarly, the tracks, alternatives five, six, seven, and eight, we have the tracks being partially elevated, alternative five, partially lowered, alternative six, and then remaining at grade for seven and eight. And so, this can be used to follow along because there is quite a matrix of alternatives. And so, just to provide clarity, and I will be going through more detail of the various alternatives. So, for the context of South San Francisco, South San Francisco has four alternatives. Alternative one, which is to raise tracks about 15 feet and to provide a partially lowered roadway. Alternative two is to partially lower the tracks and have a partially elevated crossing for the vehicular traffic. Alternative three and four are to keep the rail at grade. Alternative three, the road goes fully under. Alternative four, the road goes fully over. Due to the amount of traffic, South San Francisco has elected to provide a full grade separation, although all alternatives will have some level of property impacts. And as an update, previously had been requested about South San Francisco and where they are, they will be, staff will be going to their city council on September 9th for direction. They will be presenting these alternatives and recommending alternative one, which also corresponds with our alternative five, because it has the least amount of property impacts, the lowest cost, and the shortest construction period. So, there are three alternatives for the railroad tracks at Scott Street. It's to raise the tracks 2 and 1/2 feet, lower by 6 feet, or have the tracks stay at current elevation. The difference between 2 and 1/2 feet and keeping at current grade is not a large difference, and so those are treated as, you know, essentially one alternative for the tracks because there are substantial impacts to the properties in South San Francisco for alternatives three and four, whereas the effect of impact in South San Francisco of raising 2 and 1/2 feet versus grade will not be, you know, that perceptible when we look at it. Okay, so, these are images of the bicycle and pedestrian over/under crossing options for San Bruno. This particular slide shows the overcrossing. Alternative one, again, raises the track, and it's not very perceptible that it's been raised 2 and 1/2 feet and provides an overcrossing. Alternative two lowers the tracks by 6 feet, provides an overcrossing. Alternatives three and four keep the tracks at the same grade and provide an overcrossing. Alternatives five, six, seven, and eight are for the bicycle pedestrian undercrossing. Again, the tracks are raised by 2 and 1/2 feet. Alternative five with an undercrossing. Alternative six, tracks are lowered with an undercrossing. Alternative seven and eight, keep the tracks at the same grade and provide an undercrossing. So, I did want to provide some images of what an undercrossing, a typical undercrossing could look like. The design details have not been decided as of yet, and so those are still details that could be determined, but these are some samples. This is the Blossom Hill Road in San Jose. This, that one uses a switchback element, and this is a sample of Market Street overpass, which uses a more circular element. These are sample pictures of the pedestrian undercrossing. See, this accommodates both pedestrians and bicycles with a ramp and stairs. So, I did want to provide some profile elevations of what these various alternatives could look like, and really, we looked at the alternatives where the tracks are raised and the tracks are lowered. So, alternative one, we have the tracks being raised 2 and 1/2 feet and providing an overcrossing. As you can notice, the clearance needed from the tops of the tracks to the bottom of the undercrossing structure is 27 feet, which is quite high. Just for comparison's sake, over a freeway, it's about 18 and 1/2 feet, and so the clearance needed is quite high. And then, if we have a 4-foot overcrossing structure, what that means is that if we have an individual who's approximately 5 and 1/2 feet tall, their line side will be about 38 and 1/2 feet high. This image provides a layout view. So, the tracks are in green, the crossing structure is in brown, and it could be either over/under. In this case, it's an over. The dotted lines show the path of travel from, for the pedestrian or bicyclist. This overcrossing has the longest path because the amount of crossing and vertical clearance needed requires longer length. There are maximum slopes that we're allowed to have for ADA, and so to get to meet those slopes, it requires a longer crossing. This is alternative five. The tracks are partially raised 2 and 1/2 feet, and there's a pedestrian/bicycle undercrossing. Note that the clearance required under the train structure is 10 feet to the bottom of the tunnel. There was a question from council member Sells previously regarding the width of the undercrossing. Currently, the width is estimated to be at 20 feet, which is similar to the crossing at Homer Street, which we saw a picture of earlier. This width can be increased, but this does mean that the crossing may, will be lowered. So, for approximately every five additional feet of width, the crossing is lowered approximately half a foot. Council member Davis had also asked if there were another similar undercrossings to what might be seen at this option or this alternative. And previously cited was the Homer Crossing in Palo Alto. Since then, ACOM has let us know that there is the Mayfield Avenue undercrossing near San Antonio Station in Mountain View, which is similar in depth. The width of their ramp is about 5 feet, but our width can be wider, about 10 to 12 feet. I did take liberty of inserting a couple of slides so you could take a look at the Mayfield undercrossing. Every site is unique, and so the design elements may vary. I will say that I think, I believe the width is wider here from the tunnel to the ramp and stair structure, but I did want to give an impression of what it might look like, you know, with similar depth. So, alternative five would have the tracks being raised and providing an undercrossing. This does provide the shortest path of travel. Actually, I didn't mention, but the first option with the tracks being raised and overcrossing was about a quarter mile to get across. This one is 580 feet, which is about .11 miles. Alternative two lowers the track and provides an overcrossing. Similarly, so the tracks are being lowered 6 feet, we have the 27 feet of clearance with the overcrossing structure, and again, this means that the person's eye sight may be around 33 feet high. So, there's an overcrossing with the tracks lowered layout, and this length is longer at .18 miles. Alternative six, which provides the track lowering with an undercrossing, which is not recommended because of the depth of the undercrossing, does show similarly 10-foot clearance with the tracks being lowered. And this length is somewhat similar at .17 miles. Okay, so, staff did go to the community for community meeting number three. It was originally scheduled for late March, but due to COVID, it was postponed. After there was a level of comfort with having, taking public meetings virtually, we scheduled the public meeting, and it occurred late June of this year. We had a community meeting on June 22nd. It consisted of a presentation similar to this one and a follow-up with question and answer session. We had a separate follow-up question and answer session on 24th, two days later, for those who may have missed the first meeting or had additional follow-up questions. We sent out 20, nearly 2,500 mailers, sent updates to those on our contact list, posted on Nextdoor, and updated our project website. There were 21 attendees at the first meeting and 18 at the second. There were a couple speakers who made comments similar to the first bullet point, but I will say, note that the rest of the comments were individual comments made by an individual each. So, what I had heard was, or what we had heard was that the overcrossing was preferred, not because there was, you know, the strong desire to have the overcrossing, but because the concern is related to undercrossing. Concerns related to homeless encampments, reduced visibility of pedestrian bicyclists using the undercrossing, stormwater issues. We did hear back, I had requested information from the police department regarding any known homeless issues at the Euclid and Sylvan locations, and their response ever since was that, at least for the last year, they've had very few, if any, calls of homeless issues in these undercrossings. They attributed this to ample lighting because they cannot remain out of view. For this reason, police did have a preference for an overcrossing to maintain clear sidelines, similar to what some of the residents had mentioned. There wasn't a desire by one individual to keep an at-grade crossing with no grade separation. Someone had asked whether pedestrian/bicycle crossing was needed at all. One commenter had noticed that the terminus was in front of a resident, and those details could still be worked out, but it suggested that be moved to alignment with an intersection or completely moved to Tampran. One resident requested confirmation that residential properties would not be acquired and surrounding properties affected by the lowering or raising of the railroad construction, and that was confirmed that that would not happen. And one individual did request down walls with the pedestrian/bicycle overcrossing. So, there are really two decisions to be made, and one is related to the railroad tracks. There are three alternatives at Scott Street. That's raising it 2 and 1/2 feet, lowering it by 6 feet, or keeping at grade. The pedestrian/bicycle overcrossing, also, we can, there's a need to determine whether we prefer an overcrossing or an undercrossing. So, there are three possible track elevations, which I had just mentioned. I do want to briefly mention in the broader project, for South San Francisco, all alternatives will have some level of property impacts, with the first alternative being lowest. So, alternatives one and five, which in our case is the over and undercrossing with the tracks being raised, for, there will also be increased costs with every additional, sorry, the other alternatives, ranging from about 1.2 to twice as expensive. Additionally, the property impacts do increase from alternatives one, two, three, and four, with three and four having the most substantial property impacts in South San Francisco. So, I will be providing some conceptual renderings. These were not available at the time of the community meetings, and so I do want to present them here. I believe there may be community members in our meeting tonight. The renderings are for three views, on Scott's, sorry, on Herman, looking north at Scott, looking east toward the tracks halfway between Scott and Bay Shore, and looking south near Bay Shore Circle. So, these are the current conditions, looking north. This is a sample of what raising the tracks and an undercrossing might look like. And then, this provides the view of what an overcrossing might look like, and you will note that the crossing structure is quite tall relative to these one- and two-story buildings. These are current conditions, looking directly east. This is what an undercrossing might look like, and then an overcrossing. These are still very conceptual. No detailed design decisions have been made yet, but we wanted to provide an impression of the height of the structure. Current conditions, looking south near Bay Shore Circle. These, this is the undercrossing option. This crossing with the length of the ramp would actually lend itself well to having the landing at Bay Shore Circle, and, you know, an opportunity in the future may be to connect through Bay Shore Circle, this crossing to, more directly to Tampran and Port. So, there are some design considerations, as you had seen. The structure is quite tall, and that's because over tracks, 27 feet of clearance is required. Over a freeway, it's 18 and 1/2 feet, and the maximum slope that we're allowed to have is 8.33 for ADA, and for every 30 feet of rise, we do need a 5-foot landing. So, there are various advantages and disadvantages of pedestrian and bicycle crossing options. Some of the advantage of the overcrossing is that it's easier to construct, there's less disruption to the railroad operations, and it may potentially be less costly. However, I do want to say that the undercrossing and overcrossing will likely not be the bulk of the cost. I think a lot of it has to do with the railroad tracks, but there could, the overcrossing could potentially be less costly if we do not need to do substantial utility of the locations, which are, you know, unavoidable with the undercrossing. But it may actually still be required on some of them. It really depends on what's there and where they're located. Some of the disadvantages of the overcrossing is that it makes the ramps or the crossing more difficult because the ramps are much longer, and there's a greater visual impact, as you had seen in the conceptual renderings. Some of the advantage of the undercrossing is that it's easier for pedestrians to cross because they are shorter, and they are a lower visual impact. Some of the disadvantages are they're more difficult to construct, the greater impact to railroad operations during construction, and they could potentially be more costly due to the utilities. So, for these reasons, staff is recommending alternative five, which is to raise the tracks partially by 2 and 1/2 feet and provide a pedestrian/bicycle undercrossing. Some of the next steps would be to, after direction is provided on the preferred alternative, to prepare conceptual design, cost estimate, and renderings of preferred alternatives, complete the project study report, and then to seek additional funding for future, for next phases. Currently, there are numerous projects that are, you know, various stages of development, and so the sooner that we complete our phase, we can request additional funding for the next phase. And the cities do compete with each other for limited funding based on status of their projects. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Colleagues, if you'll start to get your questions, we'll just go around the room, but also to those in attendance, is there anybody from the audience that would like to comment tonight on this topic? If you, if you do, if you could, please sign up with the virtual hand, that would be appreciated at this time. So, do see one person I thought was going to speak, but maybe not. Okay, so, okay, we do have someone, and the City Clerk, if you would be so kind.
Oh, it looks like they went away. I saw...
Well, phone call?
No, I saw the hand for Hang Sung Gi. I'm gonna bring you in the room for just a moment to see if you wanted to speak. Hello, Hang Sung, did you want to speak? Okay. I've removed them from the room. I'm not sure if they did want to make a comment.
If I've not seen anybody at this, at this time, so we will now bring it back to council for questions. Obviously, we're being asked to give that direction and comments to staff on the elevations or the lowering and whether it's underground or above. So, who would like to go first? Councilmember Davis.
And, and that's only because it took time to get the participants and raise my hand. Technology. I, you know, actually, in preparing for tonight's meeting, I had to review a number of council packets or council videos to approve the minutes, and I did see a video of us back in February when we were all together, sitting in a council meeting, so I really do miss those days. So, my comments, you know, this is a tough decision. It's not a very easy decision for me to make. I think the ideal situation would be to have an undercrossing at street level, and I could support that fully if it was at street level, similar to the other undercrossings we have in San Bruno. They're not dark, they're not dungeons, they're not hidden away from public sight. So, I guess what I can do is support an undercrossing that I can have a better understanding of what the design is going to look like. It's very difficult for me to say, yep, one way or the other. I believe that the overcrossing is just a really big and bulky thing, but I believe that that's what the residents want, and I think that they are afraid of the homeless population, the urination. The, the problem is with undercrossings, when you really can't see because it is below grade. I know we're going to raise the tracks a little bit, which is a recommendation by staff, but I'd be interested in what my colleagues have to say, but I really struggle to support an undercrossing of the potentials that we don't have in our city right now, but the potential that we really could. Those are my comments.
And any questions at this time, Councilmember Davis?
No questions. I think staff report has been very good, so thank you so much, Hey Wan.
Okay, why don't we move on to Councilwoman Medina for questions and comments, please?
Yes, thank you. Most of my questions were from last time, and I do concur with Councilmember Davis. Just, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. For a project this big, we have very few... For a project this big, we have very few community input on this last decision. So that, that's where my hesitancy would be. I don't live there. I haven't heard anybody say too much about it. I remember at two meetings ago, but since then, you know, we, we have this huge project and we don't have community input. And so I'm really concerned with making a decision and, you know, it is COVID, of course. And we try to get people to um, be aware of these meetings. It's just like, we don't have a scoreboard on, on, you know, twenty three people want this and and two people want that. Well, that's pretty clear, right? Here we got three comments and two from two, two months ago, right? Or something like that. And maybe, maybe staff could kind of shed a little more, shed a little bit more light on that of how much? Did they get any phone calls? Did they get any emails? Where, what's the scoreboard?
Any other, uh, hold on, Hey Wong, any other questions? So we'll take them all at once.
You know, I, I, sure, I um, but we, I kind of asked them last time. I think, I think we, we heard that there's no complaints from the police and we could put some provisions uh, requiring security cameras. Um, uh, lighting, uh, maybe a, a, a emergency uh, button or something if there's something happens in there. Um, we can engineer that, just that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, my, my biggest hesitancy is here is that we don't have much community input, you know? There's a handful of people that are, are talking about this massive project that is going to go on. Um, so I, I guess my question is, how? How important is that we make a decision going one way at this point? Um, can, can, um, can we do anything more of giving the residents there a true say in what's going to happen to their neighborhood? This big, this big flying thirty three, thirty something feet in the sky, looking over everybody's backyards. I mean, I wouldn't want that if I lived there, you know? But then again, am I going to be walking underneath that uh, crossing? How often is it used? So um, those are kind of my concerns there. Um, and at the last meeting too, we talked about um, who's going to take care of it? Who's going to maintain it? And we, and we, we were told we can all work that out in the negotiations and and, but um, I think it's, for me, it's, it's the lack of community response here of, of knowing what our our residents that are going to be impacted by this every day of their lives. What do they want? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason, so your mic just went live.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think it's, I, well, first of all, um, I am really glad to hear the mention of some consideration over the across the street from single family homes. I feel like it's a story we've heard before and I'm glad that in this case it's being taken into consideration ahead of time. Um, I, I do agree that I think that the overpass not only is going to um, take away some potential privacy and not necessarily go with the character of the existing neighborhood and maybe the neighborhoods that will be there in, in, you know, twenty years as um, as we see more industry maybe coming in. But I think also um, taking into consideration um, something that I, I think we briefly discussed, but I am really curious to know again about the noise. Um, if we do the uh, the under, um, instead of doing the overpass, if we have the, the option of lowering the train track, I think it was the options five and six. Is there a difference in the noise there? I know from just taking, having taken the train myself at overpasses, oftentimes there's a um, a vibration. So you're not only hearing the tracks, but you're also hearing the metal from the overpass. So that is for me, not, not a first choice. Um, just thinking about um, the impacts on the community. And then as far as the concerns over the, you know, potential nuisances that could be created there. I've taken Bart and I feel like a lot of those nuisances are on the stairs, just getting to the parking lot. I think those could happen outside or inside. I do think that one of the um, ideas that councilmember Medina had, I definitely support is asking for security cameras. The other thing that I have seen that I think is somewhat effective is the playing of classical music. Um, so I would just say that as far as um, my preferences, that they would be five and six. Um, I agree with councilmember Medina in the sense of I, I don't really know, because as I mentioned in the last meeting, we're not getting numbers of how many people cho- choose what and what stickers were put on which, you know, designs. But I think if we're being asked tonight, that five and six would be my preferences. And I would say that the majority would go towards whichever one is going to be less noisy. Um, and I do think it's really important that we have a, a maintenance provision in place. Uh, and that we actually are holding everyone accountable to that agreement. Because if nobody's held accountable, then we're going to end up with more problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Salazar?
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of, of what's been said. Um, I agree with the councilmember Medina around uh, the public input. It would be great to have more input uh, from the people that are actually going to be using this. Whether, you know, we have uh, people with strollers, people in wheelchairs, uh, crutches, crutches or walkers or anything else that, you know, would be impacted by having to go up uh, a bunch of switchbacks or something to get over the thing versus uh, some kind of a shortcut underneath. Um, the one comment I did get from somebody I know in the area that um, would use that crossing was very hesitant to have to go underneath something that's dark and possibly, you know, full of garbage or homeless people or something else. Um, looking at the other examples, I, I did, you know, do a Google search and try to find some similar under crossings that, you know, could give me an idea of what it would look like. And a lot of the other examples tend to have uh, some sort of an open plaza area in front of it that would allow extra light to come in through the tunnel. And we just don't have the room for it. And you know, looking at a satellite view of the area, um, you know, it's um, the, even coming up on the other side, I'm not sure where people would end up. But I am not sure if they'd be somewhere behind one of those uh, commercial properties. Um, or if, you know, they would emerge. Um, I, I, I'm not sure where, where they would pop up on the other side. Because I know on the Herman side, we, we have street access on the other side. There's um, businesses that butt the tracks very closely. So um, I, I, I don't know if we would have to keep tunneling uh, past them and then come up on the next street, which would make that for a very, very long and probably pretty spooky tunnel. Uh, probably not one I would want to walk under. So um, it, it, you know, when we look at these cross sections, it definitely looks like a good solution. But when we start um, really picking apart how it might actually come um, what, what it would look like uh, in real life, then it, there's definitely a lot more questions, I think, than um, than answers around, you know, any, anything that would help me make a, a confident decision that, that it's the best possible solution. Um, so I, I mean, I, I still agree that it, it probably has the least impact on the neighborhood. But if nobody's going to use it, then why even build it? Just close it off and um, you know, make people walk to, to the next, uh, to the next possible crossing. And, you know, just kind of thinking completely outside of the options that are here. Is there any version of this where we uh, don't do an overpass or an underpass and just keep a pedestrian only crossing at Scott Street? Um, that's at grade. I, I know that there's been improvements in um, you know, the, the safety features that are available at, at those intersections where we could have better barriers, um, you know, that would prevent people from walking around and something, you know, something that would be closed off. And I know we looked at the traffic study. Um, and, you know, it's, it's bad with a lot of trains. It's even worse with no crossing. So cars are already not going to cross. Um, and if pedestrians could easily get across and just wait for their turn to come across, that's not going to have a queuing issue. Uh, but I'm wondering if that's um, i- is there a reason why that was not considered an option? That's it.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I did notice we have two people in the room and the gentleman that had wanted to speak um, was back on the iPhone. So considering we wanted to have um, uh, some input, why don't, uh, with council permission, and we're going to uh, pull on uh, the speaker. And, because that's who had had his hand. City clerk?
Okay, Hang Sung Gi, I'm going to bring you in the room again. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, hello everyone, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Um, whenever you're ready, you can start.
Sure, no problem. Uh, sorry for the microphone issue. And uh, it's my honor to share my opinion with all the city council members there. Uh, Vice Mayor, the directors and the city manager and all officers in City Hall. My name is Han Sung Ge, uh, live in Scott Street. And uh, I appreciate your desire and your idea, your opinions to this uh, cross crossing, uh, the, the regarding issue. And for me, I, by my, uh, in my view, so the over crossing will be a better idea because of the, one is a sa- a safety issue, the homeless issue and also the stormwater and issue. And so something I, I want to mention that I believe the lower down the roadway and the make over crossing will be a better idea because of the uh, the noise control. At the same time, I proposed a sound wall along Herman Street because the concentration will be increased to four times than before. If, if, if we do nothing on these streets, so the residents adjacent to the Herman Street will, will very difficult to live here because of the noise issue. If the people raise the roadway, so the dust will, will become a big issue. So the sound wall, no matter it's a concrete sound wall or it's a transparent um, noise barrier, both of them are working. So this is one important thing. And um, I, I noticed the uh, the um, so the civil engineer mentioned that one disadvantage of the over crossing is the long distance of the travel paths. To resolve the ADA issue, we can use the elevator similar at, similar in the contr- conference station not far away from here. Because uh, in the counter, uh, conference station, I noticed, I, I noticed that there is an elevator there. We can you, use a similar solution to benefit for the people uh, who, who using the wheelchair. So um, it is, um, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, so this is the uh, the thing. And I, I believe this is the most thing I want to say. And thank you very much. It's my honor to share those things with you and I hope you can consider those things, especially the sound wall to, to protect the, the property value around here and improve the environment of our community. And uh, let the new residents come here and uh, let the older residents stay here and keep our uh, uh, health and uh, just to um, make the community better and the better. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, with nothing, uh, no one else with their hands up uh, from the audience, we're going to keep it at council now. Um, I'll add just to, not to recap on what everybody else has said, but um, we had a couple of questions. Of course, of course, the stormwater kind of was an element that was brought up the last time we had met. Um, Hey Wong, you had mentioned property impacts and I just want um, to be clear and clarified because I think that's what gets people concerned. So any property impacts are in the city of South San Francisco, not in the city of San Bruno. Because even on Tam Fran, you know, I had, I had somebody who emailed and was very concerned about the, hearing their property would be uh, would be taken. So I want to make sure that's clear. Um, the other thing is, is that um, you know, when I held a meeting now at Bay Shore Circle Park, which was loud back then, that was a while ago. But that's when we were trying to decide whether to have a grade sep or not, et cetera, right? And there was a, there was fifty people that attended and, and major, their main concern and worry at that time was uh, their homes, eminent domain. If the grade separation went through, it could be twenty seven, thirty two, thirty five homes. It really wasn't defined at that point. And they remember a time when Bart came through and that also the fifth addition was possibly going to feel that, that um, as far as uh, being relocated. And so I think that may be a part of a reason. Because I think that, uh, as you know, even when we had the meeting at the senior center, once it was like, that's off the table. There was a, a sigh of relief in some ways. Um, and I even talked to the gentleman who um, uh, kind of helped facilitate the, the neighborhood and, and coming to that meeting that night, who ended up not speaking because that measure came off the table. So it seems um, it's important and I'm trying to figure out what staff has or hasn't done. I think that's fair. Um, I know if staff's been writing down some of the questions, I mean, I've written them down too. I can regurgitate them or whatever works best.
Through the mayor, uh, Devon Brogan, city manager, why don't I try and um, uh, recap some of the questions? Uh, I might toss a few to Hey Wong or our other partners, either the consultants or I, I believe we had a representative from Caltrain on uh, last time and I, I believe uh, that is true, looking at the attendees list uh, this time as well. Uh, so why don't I begin by saying I fully recognize and staff fully recognizes that this is a very difficult impactful decision uh, for the city council. Uh, I know at the study session, we talked uh, a lot about why this decision is for the city council. Uh, but due to the need to continue to progress forward uh, and develop a shovel ready project that can compete with funding uh, and all of the other great steps, uh, non-separated crossings in the county are essentially wannabe where we are and further along, which is to have a shovel ready project that can then compete for this uh, state and federal funds, uh, that will fund these great separations. Uh, a absolutely critical project to protect uh, the safety of the community uh, with the knowledge that we have, which is the uh, traffic on the railway uh, will certainly increase uh, and uh, further deteriorate uh, safety issues at the crossing. So there were a number of things raised, um, and I have a potential um, path forward that I would like to suggest to, to the city council. But why don't we step uh, through some of these issues? I think there was the issue with regard to stormwater uh, that was raised. Uh, and that is being raised because we have an existing issue with our grade separation uh, at uh, San Bruno Avenue. Uh, at the Caltrain station, uh, likely uh, poor engineering uh, design. And so with uh, if we go with a underpass, uh, we certainly know that uh, stormwater uh, will be an issue. Uh, and, but it is a, an issue that can be designed around and has been successfully designed around uh, for under crossings. Um, you know, throughout the region, uh, the state and the country. I think we in particular have a unique issue uh, with regard to our existing grade separation at, at San Bruno Avenue. Um, that is a challenge and floods during heavy rain events. Uh, with regard to um, some of the concerns that were raised within under crossing, uh, potential homelessness or uh, quality of life impacts. Uh, significant issues, issues that um, uh, uh, have to be taken into consideration uh, when you're talking about an underpass. Uh, there could be mitigations uh, that uh, we can work on uh, vis a vis maintenance agreements, vis a vis um, appropriate design and how the under, uh, passes is designed, uh, and other elements, uh, be there having light wells uh, in the under crossing if that's possible. So it's not a completely um, uh, area where there's only light on, on either sides. And, and so there, there are certain design elements that uh, can be incorporated and refined thems- themselves over time. Uh, it was mentioned uh, with regard to noise, potentially having the track lower uh, may add um, or, or decrease the amount of noise and be beneficial to the neighborhood. Uh, I believe when Caltrain addressed that at our study session, uh, the an- the answer there was, there may be some impact, but they really haven't noticed a uh, a significant decrease in noise by um, slightly lowering tracks, meaning that the tracks do not go fully underground, which is not possible here at Scott Street. Uh, and the main noise uh, concerns are from the horn. concerns are from the horns that sound because we have a non-separated crossing. And that will go away once we have a grade separated crossing. The horns will not have to sound when, when they pass by. So one of the, and then there were significant questions about community outreach and the fact that even pre-COVID, the outreach that we did for this project, once the decision was made that there would be no property impacts here in San Bruno, there was not robust engagement and feedback. And what I can tell you is that's not for lack of trying. I think one of the things we all know is that we are in the planning stage and the reality of this crossing and whatever designing it will be, probably will not occur for the next five to 10 years. And so many people, I think in the community, do not feel the gravity of this decision because the project is so far out into the future. And so what I would like to proffer to the city council is it's important to make a decision tonight, but that decision of over crossing or under crossing may be something that you feel that you cannot make tonight. And the recommendation I want to toss out is to go with alternatives one and two and five. That does a few things. It provides certainty for our partnering agency, South San Francisco, with the elevation of the track, raising it 2.5 feet. It provides us with the option to go back, do further study, do further analysis, albeit at a greater cost. And so for this next phase of conceptual design, we'll be studying here two options in San Bruno. The option of a over crossing and an under crossing with the tracks raised 2.5 feet. But that will also allow us additional time for, to try and get community members more activated and engaged in the project and try and have some sort of a dot voting exercise where the community can opine on the various options. I will say the, the one thing about the cadence, even though we did community outreach, in between the time where we had the last community meeting and the study session and today, that's when we had our renderings done. And so the community has not seen the renderings of what the overpass would look like. And what we know from the community outreach that we did do and the feedback that we received is that many were fearful of what an underpass would do. And then we think, sort of, and we'll say that that's why they gravitated to the overpass. But without those renderings on how visually impactful an overpass will be in the community, it may not have been enough for the community to really say, I want X and I want Y. So I think we can do better than that as a, another outreach effort for community engagement. What I want to caution the city council and the community is, we may be in the same situation where we don't have the community really saying, I want X or I want Y, or maybe a tie, right? And that's why you guys sit in the lovely seats that you sit at. You sit in because you have to make those tough decisions, but I'm glad I don't have to make them. But I want to toss that out because it's an option where, albeit at a little bit more cost and we'll have to go to the agencies and say, hey, San Bruno didn't narrow it down from eight options to one, we narrowed it down from eight options to two. We would like to study two options. It provides certainty to South San Francisco because with option one, they can proceed forward with a undercrossing for their vehicular traffic. And actually for them, that's the same in option one and option five. And so they can really proceed forward with their documents. And, and we would then be able to do a little bit more definition on.
Javon, you're muted.
Not the whole time, right?
Oh, yeah, could you start from the beginning again? No, not the whole time.
When I got muted. But what I was saying is that we could, by choosing option one and five, it gives South San Francisco certainty for them to proceed with their likely undercrossing for vehicular traffic. But it also allows us to do more study and have that conceptual design of what design elements we could build into a undercrossing, be it light wells, be it a wider crossing, so it's not as dark, be it potentially design elements, so it's not this scary dark place. And, and maybe design elements that may prevent some of the homeless activities or things that the community expressed that they would not like. Bring back that while also doing more analysis on what a over crossing would, would look like and, and having a conversation, should we be able, be able to coalesce enough community members around the topic to actively engage and provide you with more information. The other thing that was mentioned that I did want to talk about, and I think this was mentioned by one of the public comments, of what about an elevator shaft? So you, you may sort of think you've seen that other places. The examples I think of are on the East Bay, the Emeryville BART station that has a over crossing, but it's not the long ramps, but it's essentially a set of stairs with a very small switchback. And then the ADA path to travel is not a long ramp, it's an elevator. Those pose challenges in a situation like this because of elevator maintenance, if the elevator goes down. And it's not like at a facility like a BART station or a train station where they, they have other elevators in the building and have elevator technicians and other ways for ADA path, ADA path to travel. And so in sort of satellite areas like this, what you really see are, is infrastructure built that is essentially foolproof for ADA access. Someone won't get to that and have no ability to cross that path. And so it's typically a long ramp with the switchbacks or it's an undercrossing. And so that's why we did not go toward the elevator option. And I, mind you, with the elevator option, it would have to be open 24 hours a day and you would have those same potential elements of concern that could occur within an elevator, people sleeping or doing all sorts of terrible things that we don't want to say in a public meeting in an elevator. So that, that's what I'd like to toss out. I know I probably hit on most of the comments.
Well, you, you, you did hear about, you know, security cameras, emergency button, et cetera. You did hear that. The one thing that the vice mayor said, you know, what if? Or why could it not be at, at, at the grade? And just, but as is.
Right, and so that was talked a lot about when we made the decision to close Scott Street to vehicular traffic when the grade separation project occurs. And there's a lot of data around the amount of traffic that's projected to, to, to occur at the intersection. And the best practice is to have a separated crossing where you have the train traffic on a different elevation as vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle, or, or, or cars. And so essentially our understanding now is for new crossings that are being built and established, they're really not doing crossings where everything is at the same grade. And any crossing that is not grade separated, with the projections for our railway, frankly, every community, my understanding, that has a non-separated crossing wants to explore ways, if they're possible in that area, to have them separated due to the safety impacts. And it's important, it's an important thing to protect the community. And Haywon, if you know more specifics on that or if the Caltrain representatives on the call want to chime in, feel free to raise your hand and we'll have a city clerk bring you in.
Councilmember Mason had had a question about noise. And so if I can have, there's Milet Litzinger of ACOM and also Peter Di Stefano, he is also with ACOM. But if Milet, if you wouldn't mind speaking about the noise component?
Hi, yes, good evening. This is Milet Litzinger from ACOM. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Awesome. So just to the point too, I will speak to the noise one, but just talk about, you know, what happens if you do nothing? I think, you know, one of the big points that we need to make is the future plans for Caltrain and their business plan is to significantly increase the number of trains over, over time. So the potential opportunities for conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles at aggregate crossing just increases significantly. And so, you know, safety is a big reason why we want to do this. And not only you're going to have more trains, they're also going to travel faster when electrification also gets implemented. So that's one of the big reasons why you really want to, one of the goals of grade separating is so you do increase that safety and provide that separation between those modes of traffic. I could add a little bit more about the noise study. Last time, at the study session, I made reference to ACOM had recently done a noise study for the city of Palo Alto and their grade separation program. They have several options and alternatives that they're looking at that you're, are similar to here, like a hybrid, a viaduct, which would be like your, where you're, the road, where the, you have elevation on the roadway. So the, what we determined from that study was that this, as the, was already suggested, was that the reduction, adding the grade crossing, yeah, adding the grade separation eliminates the horn noise. And that's the majority of sap noise increases in the neighborhood are related to the horn noises. So just by grading and eliminating the need for the horns to blow their horns as they cross the aggregate crossing will be a huge improvement. When we started on this Palo Alto, we were looking at all the different alternatives and how there were differentiators with whether you elevated the grade or you lowered the grade. There really was not a significant detectable difference by the ear of all of those options. So we really didn't find that whether you lowered or raised that it made a significant impact or change in the noise level in comparison to the reduction in the horn noise. I think the other comment we talked about as well is with electrification. The train noise is generated from a different location from the diesel engines. It comes from the bottom of the train rather than the top. So with that, there's, we can introduce mitigations like parapet walls along the alignment that will also help mitigate any noise that would be perceived by the alternative considered.
Okay, thank you. And Ned, Haywon, did you want to add anything else or Peter or?
Yeah, I was, if you want me to speak a little bit about the drainage issues, I could, I could talk about that a little bit. We, we actually worked on a project in Melo Park recently where we designed a tunnel, actually very similar in depth to this one. The, the city of Melo Park had a concern about drainage as well. So we designed a sump pump where when the water level got to a certain point, it would trigger a switch and electric, it would get triggered electrically to pump the water out into the drainage system near, into the street, nearby street. And there was a concern, hey, what if there's a power outage? You know, the tunnel could flood. So we, we set it up and designed it so a generator could be set up next to the street, they could bring in a portable generator to pump, pump the water. Again, there's, there's a lot of undercrossing, some of this one, Homer, like, like we mentioned before, the one at Mayfield at San Antonio Station as well. I'm not aware of any flooding issues at those. Like, maybe we could talk to Caltrain about that and get back to council on that. But I, I don't, they foresee the flooding being a major concern for the undercrossing.
Okay, thank you. All right, so a lot of those questions that we had raised have been talked about or answered by one of the folks. You heard from our city manager. Any action or direction for staff from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to ask when they do go back. I, I, I think the suggestion to move forward with two out of the eight options is, is a good idea and getting some more community input. And, and when we're obtaining that input, if we could schematically show what the difference, how much deeper, how much longer the, the, this new tunnel would be compared to the ones that are currently here in San Bruno. So that when you walk through the, the UCL undercrossing, you go, okay, it's, it's 10 more feet longer or five feet deeper. So we, we understand the scale that this is because it's really hard to see with, with these renderings. And in, in the, in the presentation, I don't think we covered, or, or maybe I missed the, the picture showing how well lit these tunnels are. I'm looking at the presentation, I guess that's number 52 and slide 53, 52 and 53. It shows very well that these are pretty well lit. So those are the kind of things I think would help our public understand, just to be able to.
Councilmember Davis.
Uh, thank you so much. I, I totally agree and I, I so thankful that Javon gave us that option to actually go forward to because I really would struggle here tonight to make a decision, but I would like to support one and five.
Okay. Any other council member comments?
Through the chair?
Yeah, vice mayor.
Yeah, I think I like what, what the city manager is suggesting. It still gives us two options, it narrows down what we're, you know, the, the whole realm of possibilities, but it still gives one more opportunity for the public to comment, whether they want to go over or under, but at least it narrows that down. So I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with that.
Okay. Nothing. What we, oh, one and five, I got it now. Took me a minute, thanks. So I, I'm also comfortable with that as well and with what my other colleagues have said. Is there any, anything else from any electeds? Oh, is that a? Yes, councilmember Mason?
If we went with one and five, will that provide an opportunity for another, another kind of study session? Just to engage the public on a preference?
I think the city manager was trying to get it scoped down to two out of the eight so that that could go back to and try to engage the community and seeing if they had input. Correct me if the city manager.
I'm sorry, just want to be clear, it's a separate meeting now. It's a separate meeting where we, we are not going to vote, just really a discussion for the community. Similar to the one that was had back in, maybe it was November, when, at American Legion.
So, so why don't I provide a little clarity on that? So council action to move forward with one and five to the next phase of the project would mean that we would partner with South City to seek funding for the next phase of design work. We would be studying two options. They likely would be studying one, their council meeting, I think is a day or so after today, where they will, they'll make their, their, their decision. And then that is a long process for us to apply for the funds, be awarded the funds and then that design work to occur. Haywon, please opine on how long that process will be. But while that process is going on, we can be designing our community outreach effort that can have various components to it before we return to the city council. And so what we would want is for that, some of that design work to occur and then go out to the community with some of that information to get more robust input. And that could be, hopefully we're way past COVID by then. That could be in-person sessions, it could be surveys, hang tags, et cetera. And then we would likely come back to the city council with various meetings, likely a study session and then a, a, a action meeting to determine the final design. And so there, there, there's plenty of time to design that outreach effort and have multiple injects. And I'm going to shut up because Haywon knows more specifics on what that next meeting will look like.
I was going to say, it's, that's, I think, I just wanted to make sure there was going to be an opportunity for more engagement. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with one implied, given that there's going to be more opportunity to make a final decision.
Melissa Regiardo, I think she can speak to the timeline a bit more. But I will say that we, if we were to proceed with alternative one and five.
that we, if we were to proceed with alternative one and five, there is the next stage of this particular planning study. We, this particular funding expires, I believe in April. And so we would largely want to be completed with the study by then. However, this next phase of this study does allow for the development of the over and undercrossings. So additional costs, I believe those are at the 15% level. And we can independently come back to council with information on, you know, the 15% designs and the costs and additional renderings that a council could view. And then also we take that to the community as well. I'm not sure that the project necessarily has the funding to do that additional level. I think that might be something Ms. Regiardo might be able to discuss and as well as timing.
This is Melissa Regiardo from Caltrain. Thank you, Hey Juan. I really do agree with everything you've just said, but just to provide a little bit more detail, what we'll do based on your decision tonight is that we'd move ahead with the project study report incorporating alternatives one and five from the rail configuration perspective, assuming that South City also makes it to that decision point. And then we would study both the over and undercrossing at the conceptual level of planning. So during that process, we would add more detail to the designs and potentially produce additional renderings. And AECOM, Milet and Peter can also weigh in here in terms of more detail on that work. But then you can use it to basically do community outreach while we're preparing that project study report. And ideally, we'd be able to finish it up around the April timeframe, which is when that TA funding expires. If we need to go a little bit beyond, we can seek an extension of that agreement. But yeah, I hope that helps provide what the next few months would look like. And I don't know if Milet and Peter want to add some detail to that.
Is there anything else to add or are we?
No, I, I, this is Milet. I think that it, that is fine. I mean, we would have, I think it is correct that it's currently not in our scope to do additional outreach, but we certainly do have additional design work to do related to the PSR. We would also be doing cost estimates as well as the renderings, which would have more information that you could provide to the community.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. City manager, staff, do we have direction? Hey Juan, one in five? Okay. So with that said, we'll just continue on conduct of business and go to, and thank you for everybody being here for the dialogue.